For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember White. Good evening. The 1,918th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is the voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, April 26, 2021. With the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember White? Here. Location? Oh, I'm sorry, Lehigh Acres, Florida. Councilmember McCullough?
Present, Livonia, Michigan.
Councilmember Donavick? I believe he's coming on. Okay, Councilmember Jolly?
Present, Livonia, Michigan.
Councilmember Toy?
Here, Livonia, Michigan.
Vice President Barr?
Here, Livonia, Michigan.
President McIntyre?
Here, City Hall, Livonia, Michigan. Thank you very much. We, the only member of the council we are missing is Councilmember Donavick, who I believe will be joining us shortly. And he is, if he joins us, Clerk Nash, if you would please just indicate that he's here and his location, I believe, is still active duty military. All right, at this time, we have the presentation of revised minutes for the 1,906th regular meeting of the City Council that was held on Monday, March 8, 2021. And there was a, there was just a slight revision to the minutes. Council?
So moved.
Second.
Support from Jolly? And if no one has any comments or additional corrections? Madam Clerk, if you would please take the vote on approval of the minutes of the 1,916th regular meeting from May, March 8.
Councilmember White? Aye. Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the minutes are approved by all six councilmembers who are on the call. And at this time, we will have the presentation of the minutes for the 1,917th regular meeting of the City Council that was held on March 22, 2021. Council?
So moved.
Councilmember Toy?
Support.
Support, Councilmember White. If no one has corrections or edits, Madam Clerk, if you would please take the vote on approval of the March 22 minutes.
Councilmember White? Aye. Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
President Barr?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Vice President Barr? President McIntyre?
Aye, and the minutes for-
If the two fits.
Skip the word.
Exactly, so the March 22, 2021 meeting are approved. At this time, I go to the council. If anyone has any announcements, tributes, or recognition they'd like to make, now is an opportunity to do so.
Madam President?
Councilmember Jolly?
If I may, I'd like to wish a happy birthday to my daughter Claire. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Claire. Can, can you tell us how old Claire is?
She's gonna be eight. She's rambunctiously playing outside at the moment, so I should go on mute before you hear the chaos outside. Thank you.
Well, very happy birthday to Claire, and I'm sure that her parents and siblings will have a wonderful time celebrating her special day.
Madam President?
Vice President Barr?
No announcements, but probably appropriate time. I'm just gonna ask that item number 21 tonight, it's the second reading for zoning for the city architect issue. I'm gonna ask if that'd be, I know just in keeping with our practice of holding up second reading until we have a site plan.
All right, I'm having a little bit of a difficult time hearing you. So you're asking that, that we remove that?
Item 21, I just asked that we remove that from the agenda tonight, since we typically hold up second readings of zoning changes until we have a site plan. That's all.
All right. Thank you. And if I remember correctly, we don't need any official, we don't need to vote on that. Is that correct, Mr. Burnier? You're on mute.
The council has the discretion to place that on, remove it from the agenda.
That is what I thought. I just didn't want to overstep. All right, I have just a brief announcement to make before I announce some birthdays that we missed last month. And that is just to note the passing last Friday of Prince Philip of the United Kingdom, who was the longest-serving royal consort, I believe, ever. And it's a very curious sort of role. Royal consort is the spouse of the queen. And somebody made a comment, and you know, many people have commented that they find Americans' fascination with British royalty interesting, since we fought a rather bloody war to get away from all that. But somebody made the comment that I did think was really interesting. He's been alive for all of our lifetimes. And I think that's kind of notable and interesting when you think about the history somebody has seen, especially somebody from that purview. So just a little interesting note. All right, I'm going to read birthdays that we announced, that we missed mentioning, and there's no truth to the rumor that I didn't let these be announced to avoid overshadowing my own around the same time period. Beginning with Denise Mayer, our Director of Human Resources, on March 24, almost my birthday twin. March 29, Brian Kahn, our Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, and the guy that maybe for his birthday, he got to sleep first time in a year. And on March 29, a very happy birthday to Dave Blair, our fantastic Assistant City Engineer. At this time, I go to Councilmember Jolly, who I believe has some retirees this evening.
Let me find those real quick in my email. I apologize.
Okay. All right, well, you're doing that. I will take this opportunity to welcome Councilmember Donavick, who's now been able to join us. And at this time, I'm going to go and go through the introduction of the department heads, and everyone knows the drill. It's always a little bit awkward to do this because I have to do it from the Zoom screen and then a separate list. But beginning with Sarah Kaskrich, our Manager of the Council Office and the Council Business, LaShawn, our Director of Governmental Affairs, Susan Nash, our City Clerk, Mr. Todd Zelensik, our City Engineer, Mr. Paul Burnier, our City Attorney, Mr. Mark Terramina, our Director of Economic Development and Planning, Casey O'Neill, the Director of Information Services. And, okay, we have, let's see, Jacob Rushlow, our Deputy Superintendent of DPW, Josh Sabo, our Director of Communications and Community Resources, Linda Schele, our City Clerk, Parks and Recreation, that may be Mr. Ted Davis, our Director of, I'm sorry, Josh Sabo's the Director of Communications, and I think I'm missing part of that. Ted Davis is our Director of Parks and Recreation and Community Resources. And I hope that I am not missing anyone. Mr. Jolly, did you have a list?
I do have a list, and I apologize for not having it there. I was looking under April, and these are actually from March. The only retiree for March is Thomas Shinsky, DPW Foreman, DPW Parks Foreman, who retired with 13 years of service, and we thank him for his service and we're grateful for all that he's added to our community over the years. Thank you.
And before I go to Councilmember Toy, I would just like to, under personal, I should have said that, to recognize that our Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Eric Goldstein, just made, crossed a milestone. It was a year ago that he was diagnosed with glioblastoma. And make it to one year is extraordinary. And as I've commented before, Eric was extraordinary before he had this diagnosis and has really been a beacon of light for everyone as he's been through this journey. And so if we could all just take a moment maybe to, you know, be thankful for Eric's, Eric's journey, successful journey, and that he is with us, and that he is fantastic. And I know he appreciates hearing from all of his city friends and family. So we're continuing to think of you, Eric, and always enjoy seeing you and hearing from you. So thank you. And now I will recognize Councilmember Toy, and I will also let everyone know that Councilmember Toy's a little under the weather, so if she's not able to stay with us this evening, that's why. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to share with you that today, and unfortunately, as you've said, I've been under the weather, Vice President of our committee, Brandon McCullough, was able to go up to MSU, and also LaShawn from the mayor's office, along with Nathan. Nathan filmed it from cable so that all of you would be included in seeing what they saw, and therefore, hopefully, I'll get to see it too. And I just, I wanted to share that with you because they took time out of their schedules to do that, and I appreciate it so much. Thank you so much. Everybody was invited, but I know everybody's got work schedules and other things in life, so appreciate it, Madam Chair, so much that these individuals were able to go up, along with a couple constituents that were there as well. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy, and I believe you were instrumental in setting that up. And again, thank you very much, Councilmember McCullough, and Director Thomas. Very much appreciate your taking time from your busy schedules to go, and it sounds like we'll have an opportunity to experience, or at least see what you saw today. At this time, I'd like to announce that we have new data on items 18, 19, and 20, and I will refer specifically to those new data items when we reach those items in tonight's agenda. At this time, we go to audience communication. We set aside half an hour at the beginning of each meeting for audience communication. As always, I'm going to ask our council parliamentarian, the Honorable Councilmember Kathy White, if she would please read the rules for audience communication.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the public audience at the meeting shall not speak until they are recognized by the chair. Each person recognized by the chair to address the council shall identify himself or herself by name and, if appropriate, group affiliation. A person addressing council on an item on the agenda shall be limited to two minutes, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present, and shall be recognized to speak prior to council's consideration of the item. There will be an audience communication section of not more than 30 minutes duration at the beginning of all council, regular, and study meetings where citizens may address the council. There will also be an audience communication section at the end of all regular and study council meetings where citizens may address council on any matter that is not on the agenda of that meeting. Citizens who wish to expand upon their remarks will be asked to reduce the matter to writing and submit it to the city clerk, and such item may be placed on a future council study session for further consideration. A person addressing council under the audience communications portion of the agenda will be limited to a total of three minutes at each study or regular meeting, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present. A citizen may address the council once during audience communication. If the citizen has addressed the council during the first audience communication period at the beginning of the meeting, the citizen will not be permitted to address the council again during any audience communication period at the end of the meeting. Anyone addressing the council shall make responsible comments. Personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks are not permitted, and anyone causing a breach of the peace may be removed from the council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So as our parliamentarian just reviewed the rule, it is now 7:16, which means that we set aside until 7:46 for the first session of audience communication. So at this time, I will go to the audience. If anyone would like to address the council on any item not on this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. Calling once. Calling, oh, there we go. All right. Good evening. I'll go first to Bethany, and we will ask that you please give us your first and last name and address. Good evening.
Hello, I, my name is Bethany Ellis. I live in McComb Township, Michigan. I was, I know it's been brought to your guys' attention before, and we were wondering what the status of the Beagles that were chained up in Livonia is, if there's any new laws and regulations pertaining to, like, not being able to have dogs chained up 24/7, like, before it gets blisteringly hot. And I don't know, I would just sleep a lot better, you know, knowing that the Beagles were safe. Like, I think about them, like, every night, knowing that they're, they're all, like, they're just, like, stuck outside 24/7 with, like, no, like, love or affection. I don't even live in Livonia, but I've been following that story closely because it really, it's crazy that, like, the city of Livonia knows that, that there's animal abuse happening out in the open and isn't taking, like, direct action to stop it. And I was wondering if there is something, like, preventing you guys from stopping it, and if there is, then what can we do to get rid of that, whatever's stopping you? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember McCullough, did you want to address that?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. To the audience comment, to the chair to the audience comment. If you were to read the agenda packet for the study session that's following this, I believe it's either 16 or 17. There was a report and recommendation, I want to say maybe six or seven weeks ago, and we're gonna be reviewing that after, like I said, 16 or 17 in the study session. So if you wanna, you know, stay tuned, we should probably, we'll be getting to that fairly soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough, and just to clarify, you, it was a, you know, it was a question and comment because it's not on the agenda for this meeting, but the next one. And that meeting will commence at 8 o'clock or 10 minutes following the conclusion of this meeting, as long as it's not prior to 8 o'clock. So thank you very much. Next, we will go to phone number ending in 7673. Good evening, and if you could please share with us your name and address. Let's see, you should be able to unmute yourself. Try again. Oh, sorry. That was my fault. Okay, good evening. Good evening. Good evening. You need to, if you're just joining us by phone, you need to press, I believe it's pound 6. Is that correct, Casey?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I am so sorry. You think after all these meetings, I would get this right?
No problem. No problem.
Carol McKee, 28984 Westfield Street. I had the same questions regarding the Beagles. It was nearly two months ago that we brought this to your attention, and we agreed then to take it to the legal team. Happy to hear that it's gonna be talked about in the next meeting. Is that a meeting that's open to the public as well?
Every meeting that the City Council has is open to the public, with the exception of closed committees or the whole, or if we go into closed session during a meeting, and it's a very narrow range of items which we can, which we are able to go into closed committee, including attorney-client privilege, negotiation of strategy of contract, contract strategy negotiations between the city and our, and our public sector union, and some very limited cases of personnel. Other than that, every single meeting that we have is open. So yes, it is, and you can find the information for that on the City Council page under the study agenda.
Okay, so it's not the same calling number if we stay on? We won't get automatically joined?
No, I believe you can. I believe you can stay on.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else from the audience that would like to communicate with the council on any item not in this evening's agenda? Now is your last opportunity to do so at the first audience communication session. Going once, going twice. All right, and we are closed with audience communication, our first session of the regular meeting. At this time, we go to reports from the mayor and other city officials. We have communication from the Department of Finance dated March 23, March 23, 2021, forwarding the quarterly investment report for the city of Livonia as of February 28, 2021. And we are respectfully suggesting that this item be received and placed on file for the information of the council. And as long as we're talking about the Department of Finance, I have not seen him yet, but want to welcome our Director of Finance, Mr. Slater, back into the office. I think he's been back for a while, but after suffering an injury over the Christmas holidays, we have all been praying for and sending Mr. Slater good wishes and are very happy that he's recovered enough to be back with us and the council offices. So welcome back, Mike, and we hope you're feeling well. At this time, we go to the consent agenda, and I am going to ask, the consent agenda this evening, our items 1 through 16, before we go there, I'm going to ask that we pull item number 2 off the consent agenda. And just for the audience's information, any member of the council may request that any item be pulled off a consent agenda prior to the agenda's business being taken up. Items originally 1 through 16, now 1 through 16, with the exception of item 2, are on what's known as a consent agenda. They're voted on as one item. It doesn't mean that they are any less important than any other item on tonight's agenda, but rather, when we, when we, when we covered them in our last study meeting, they were determined to be non-controversial in nature, and so they're voted on as one item. Excuse me, council?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember White?
Second.
Supported by Councilmember Jolly. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the approval of the consent agenda? Again, items 1 and then 3 through 16.
Councilmember White? Aye. Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved by all seven members of council. At this time, we will go to item number 2 from the consent agenda, which was an award of bid. This came to us from the Communication Department of Community Resources for the Elle magazine agreement, Fall 2021 through Spring and Summer of 2023, from budgeted funds, council.
I'll offer an approving, Madam President.
I'll support that.
We have support from Councilmember White, and I ask that this be taken off the consent agenda because I had, and I think some other, I don't know, members of council, but other members of the administration had an email asking for details about this and why it was awarded to the bidder who was selected. Would anyone from the, would anyone from council have any questions, or does anyone from the audience have any questions about this item?
Madam President?
Councilmember Barr?
I assume, I mean, I have questions, but I assume, were we gonna talk to someone from the administration or whatever to get? I mean, the obvious question is, based on the information that was provided, is why we're not going with the lowest bidder on this item? In fact, there were two lowers, two bidders that were lower on it. And I think, if I recall correctly, I don't have it in front of me, but I think we are actually paying 25% more than what the lowest bidder was. And so, I don't know if that was the proper order, what you were looking for, but that's the question that I-
Yes, and that's a question that we, that we had received via email today, and so I wanted to see if the person who said it was on the line and wanted to ask a question. But thank you, Vice President Barr. And I see that we have Mr. Sabo, who would like to respond to the question. Good evening, Josh.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you, Council Vice President Barr, for your question. Regarding why we selected this bid from, which, as you acknowledged, was not the lowest, is really a combination of things. One has to do with the fact that we feel that this is an incredibly important part of our communications toolkit in the city of Livonia when it comes to communicating with residents. It's something that we chose to pursue in combining these two magazines because we felt like an improvement in quality could be a huge asset to our communications program as we reach residence. You know, this is a product that not only do we hope that residents will receive, you know, a few times a year, but we hope that they hold on to it, right, and it's something that stays in, in their drawer in their kitchen or, you know, on the, on the counter for a while as a resource for any number of city programs and services. And so that's a big part of why we wanted to make sure that we were going with something that we felt like was the highest quality possible. Related to questions about, you know, why there were lower bids, I would mention two things here. One is that ID Enterprises, which is the bid that we are recommending council accept, is slightly larger than some of the other bids that were offered here. One other one, and we received samples that were printed, that are printed for other communities in our area from each of our finalists, and we felt that there was a noticeable, and this was something that was the case kind of across our entire communications team that looked at these, when considering these bids, was of a higher quality. ID Enterprises was than other ones that we received. And that was something that was just noticeable despite it being printed on the exact same quality paper as, you know, we requested in the bid. And so that was two, two very important things for us. And I'd just add, finally, you know, another consideration for us was making sure that we were streamlining a process that allowed us to save as much staff time as you think going from two magazines to one would save us. And ID Enterprises is a firm that we have an existing relationship with. Parks and Recreation has used them to print materials for the last 34 years, and we're comfortable with their process. They're comfortable with our process and timeline as well. And we think that there's a lot of value added to residents by having a reliable product that's also going to be of the quality that the bid proposal that they outline will provide us. So happy to answer any other additional questions.
Madam President?
Vice President Barr?
Yeah, through the chair to Josh, and Josh, thanks for answering that question. Can you detail a little more what the difference in quality was? I mean, because usually when you do a job like this, you're specking out what your qualifications are, and I would assume that anyone that bid is able to meet those qualifications.
Correct. So I mean, it is really tough, through the chair to Councilmember Barr, it was tough to kind of assess for you. We do have in my office all of, you know, what we received from each of the vendors that are put forward bids here, and there just was a noticeable difference in quality, not only in obviously the size of the product, which we knew were gonna be different based off of the bids that they, that they provided us, which is a difference in the quality of the material still as well. You know, obviously, we had certain specs that were in the bid. I'm not an expert on, you know, the material of these products, but the one that was provided by ID Enterprises was of not only my opinion, but also the rest of the folks in my department who analyzed this, and people at Parks and Rec as well, that it was of a higher quality. And that's obviously, you know, one of the most important parts of why we're proposing combining these two magazines via this bid.
So to be clear, I think it's wonderful what you're doing, combining, combining them, and the intent of what you're doing, I think, is great. Did each bidder meet the qualif, meet the specs that we had laid out for them?
It's a yes, insofar as, you know, I'm not really sure how you could evaluate the paper that was provided, right? Like, they all seem to be-
I've been involved with, I've been involved with print projects, bidding them out in previous jobs, and it wouldn't be uncommon for us to spec what type of paper we wanted it to be.
Sure, and there were, and there were specs included in, in our RFP as well. I guess I'm just saying that, you know, what we received from each of the firms, I couldn't confirm that it was of the quality that was stated in the bid, but we had asked them to provide, you know, of the quality related to the bid. And so, you know, based off of, you know, that was part of the evaluation that we made when we received the materials.
It just seems odd to me that the specs are being met, that there'd be that much variation. You know, we, I can appreciate wanting to work with someone you've worked before, but actually, just recently, within the last couple meetings, we had a bid we were doing related to, to concrete work, to road reconstruction, and we went, you know, there was a contractor that we use all the time and are very familiar with, and we went with someone we've never used before for a savings that was a lot less than 25%. As I recall, going off the top of my head, it was $38,000, which I think for that contract was about 5% to 8%. 25% is a huge difference. percent. 25% is a huge difference. And we're talking about taxpayer money here, which over the life of the contract here, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars. I know that in the scope of the city budget, that's not a big deal, but from a percentage perspective, it's just, it's hard for me to understand, especially for something as commodity-based as producing a magazine, that we couldn't get consistent products from the different bidders. And, I mean, Madam President, I'm not, let me ask this, Josh, what's the, what's the timeline for needing to make a decision on this?
The decision is rather quick. We are at the tail end of the existing contract for the Love Livonia magazine, and so the next issue of both L Magazine and the Love Livonia magazine would be the first combined edition here, if I can too as well. Included in our RFP was a note that type setting and design were going to be factors in that evaluation. And so that was, you know, obviously, a consideration.
Was design the issue, then? I thought it was paper that was the issue.
I just mean that in, in the grand scheme of things, that there were, you know, a number of considerations outside of, obviously, the process and pricing, of course, but also when it related to type setting and design, and as you had mentioned, the kind of paper quality.
When does, when does that next issue, when's that scheduled to go out?
I can pull that up for you if you give me just one second. I apologize. I do have it open now. The first bid here would be for the Fall 2021 edition, but that's something that our, our process for that obviously gets us started quite a few months before those editions.
So when does the process for that start?
Really, it's already started. Typically, we would have started that at the start of April.
When, when does, let me ask it a different way. When does that need to go to print?
The print calendar, I believe, was in a previous edition of what I had submitted to council, but booklets, booklets for this would be mailed out in mid-November, but I believe that we'd be looking at going to print in the beginning of June.
Okay, Madam President, I'm going to suggest that this be punted into the next, I, we don't need to put it in committee, but I'm going to suggest that this be punted at the next meeting, which will give, I'd like to meet with Josh and maybe other council members too, and I'd like to see the different samples and understand why we're paying 25% higher than the lowest bidder on this before we, before I'm prepared to vote on it. So I'd make that motion to push this to the next meeting, if that requires a motion.
So, I think right now, we have a motion on the floor.
Oh, that's right.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the-
Okay, so, Madam President, I'll make a substitute motion that we put this to the next meeting?
Okay. So, Mr. Burnier, we vote, we need a second, right? We need a second.
Support, Madam President.
Support from, from Rob Dalvik. So now, we take a vote on the substitute motion? Are we voting to substitute the motion? Are we voting on the substitute motion? This is, I'm sorry, I get confused on this point.
Good question.
We're voting on the sub- I'll leave it to, yeah. I was gonna say, I'll leave it to get Ms. White, who is actually the problematicary, but it's my understanding they'd be voting on, on what, on the substitute motion.
Great, great. All right, so we're in agreement that we're voting on the actual substitute motion by Vice President Barr.
I, Madam President?
Yes.
I, I thought we had to vote, just parliamentary procedure here, I thought we had to vote to substitute first, and then we voted on it.
Yes, yes, yes.
As I'm thinking of it, yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but, okay, then I confused myself and confused the issue. All right, so, we are now taking a vote on accepting the substitute motion, correct?
Right, right.
Okay. All right. Clerk Nash, would you please take the vote on accepting the substitute motion by Vice President Barr?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough? I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
That was a no.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. So, the substitute motion has been accepted. Now we vote on the substitute motion, correct?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call vote on the substitute motion by Vice President Barr, and that is, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jolly?
I was, I know you may have been about to say this. Can you just clarify what that is once again for the record?
Yeah, that's what I was doing. Okay. So, and I'll let Vice President Barr recap his substitute motion.
Simply to move this agenda to our next regular meeting, this agenda item to our next regular meeting, which will give us time to follow up anybody who wishes to see the samples that Josh is talking about and better understand this.
Okay. All right. Vice President?
And Madam President, I, I'm sorry, I just, I just want to make clear, I, I'm not trying to be difficult here. I'm trying to just, I think it's a very legitimate question to ask this. I'm purposely not putting it into committee, because that would just lengthen this further. I don't think this has to be a complicated issue. I just, with us not, if we had been in person, I'm sure Josh would have had samples to pass around to us. We don't have that, and so by pushing this in the next meeting gives us an opportunity to do that.
Councilmember McCullough, and then Councilmember Jolly.
President, and I just want to clarify, the reason that I voted no is, you know, we had this in the last study meeting, and I think it was brought up. There was no request for new information. Everything's, you know, in front of us for the matter of reading the packet item and seeing the highlighted items that have been in the packet, with no real information. That is my main reason for voting, to support this initiative and just let the process begin. So, just wanted to go on record for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough, Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just say, you know, Mr. Sabo indicated that we do have a little bit of time to look at this further. I think that's perfectly appropriate, so long as it does not push back any deadlines. The only thing I was going to say too, earlier when I asked for some clarification there, we so rarely go down the road of having substitute motions and all these other things. I wanted to make sure that we were, that I understood what we were voting on, and also that we followed the procedure. I think we also have to go to audience communication on this, I'm not sure, before we call a vote. That's all I was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Danovic?
Thank you, Madam President. Like some of my colleagues have said, I think this is a great idea. That's why I've been supporting it. I trust the mayor's administration, and I'm not here to micromanage by any sense. But at the same time, residents and taxpayers do have a right to know and to have the best negotiation of our tax dollars. So, if there's an opportunity for us to save a few dollars, I'm in full support of that initiative, but at the same time, I don't want to give up quality. But if a few members of this body would like a few clarifying questions, and to meet with members of the administration, I think that's good governance. And like Mr. Sabo acknowledged, you know, there is a little bit of time here. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll put my hand down now. Well, I thought I did. Lower hand. There we go. Madam Chair, thank you. I just wanted to say, I want to be consistent. I tried to look at that cement bid that was out at the time, and that Councilman Barr brought up, and after looking closer at it, you know, changed my mind. So, I'm trying to be consistent, but I think there's an opportunity here, as I think Mr. Sabo was pointing out, where we can start combining some of this printing, it looks like. And I thought it was clear, as Councilman McCullough said during the study session, but if members have a problem with that, I have no problem moving it to the next meeting, if, as Councilman Jolly said, if there's no constraint on this. But I look forward, if Parks and Rec is using these folks, maybe we can even get a better discount in time, and I, and I'm sure the administration and others are conscientious of those facts. Appreciate it very much, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy, and thank you to Councilmember Jolly for the reminder that we do need to go to the audience and like to go to the audience. If anyone in the audience has any comments on this substitute motion, which is defer this until the next meeting, now is your opportunity to do so. And it looks like we have someone who would like to address the council. Phone number 7750, and it looks like you're a call-in, so you use star six to, star six to. Good evening, and if you could please give us your name and address.
Yep, my name is John Dixon, and I am the person that was the lowest bidder. I work for Hearst Corporation, and we are the low bidder on this project.
All right, Mr. Dixon?
And I just wanted to state, you know, in my email, I had sent an email about three weeks ago, after the last city council meeting, and I had read the minutes and the agenda and the notes from the meeting, where the, you know, ID Enterprises was recommended as the provider for this service, when you're going to be paying, like I stated in my email, 25% additional for this contract that would last over two years. And, you know, we sent samples, and if their, their samples are better, from what I'm understanding in today's meeting, we, you know, the paper is specified, you know, we print a great product, we mail very well, we do work for, you know, the City of Novi, close to you, the parks and, well, it's actually Community Ed Department. We do printing all around the surrounding areas, and I'm just concerned that you're not taking the lowest bidder, and the waters are being muddied by combining these two products as a proposed savings. But when you look at the actual bid, apples to apples, it doesn't matter how many pages there are, our bid is still substantially lower. We are a high-quality company, you know, we're an $11.4 billion company. We have the resources, we have all the capabilities to produce this product in a quality fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Well, we will be voting shortly on whether we are going to push this to the next meeting, giving us some more time to look at it, see the samples from your organization, well as the other bidders.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. All right, and then we go to the creation, and I'm thinking maybe this is Mr. Ted Davis, our Director of Parks and Recreation, Community Resources. Let's see. All right.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Council President McIntyre, Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. I just wanted to weigh in on this issue. I was, excuse me, I was listening to the meeting. One of the things that I think is important to realize is, the paper was specked.
Ted, we haven't, Ted, maybe it's just me, I'm having just a little bit of a difficult time hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me any better now?
That's better.
Okay. Sorry about that. Again, Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. I was listening to the meeting, and one thing I did want to say, actually, a couple of things, is one, the paper was specked, as Councilman Barr said, and we didn't see anything deficient in that. Two things I will bring up on this project, type setting and design is one of them. So, we were given samples of everyone's work, and we had to evaluate that, right? And there's an aesthetic quality there. The other thing I will bring up is that, you know, currently, the people who, I think, publish the existing Love Livonia magazine, I'm not sure that, you know, what I will say is, our relationship with ID Enterprises in publishing, publishing the L Magazine has been outstanding, and we value that relationship. So, when you do have a publication like this, that takes a lot of time, a lot of back and forth, a lot of staff energies, you want to make sure you have the best possible relationship that's going to give you the best possible product. And that was one of the reasons that put ID Enterprises, obviously, at the top of the list for us, was we do have a great experience with them. They are a great partner to us. And again, I think when you're evaluating, you know, type setting and design, there's a certain aesthetic value to it. And we did look at everyone else's, and I think we recommended the best choice for the city. You know, it happens that we have a cost savings any way we go, which is great. I will also tell council that our information for the L Magazine, for the next L, would be due May 4th for our staff. This is a publication that needs to go to the printer in the beginning of June. So, when we push back it to a council meeting, we're starting to push back publication cycles, because it is a process to go back and forth, to finalize everything, to make sure we're as error-free as possible, then print it, then get it out to mail, and get it into people's homes. We wanted it out to people's homes in the beginning of August, really. So, there is a process to this. So, even pushing it back a meeting might not sound like a big deal. We do have some, a lot of work that goes into this, and even after council awards, there is always back and forth regards to, to finalizing a contract and getting law and everyone else to sign off on this. So, it would impact future deadlines.
All right. Thank you, Ted. Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you. Just to Mr. Sabo, can you provide these examples to Sarah in the council office, so that we can have them available in our office to review as we can find time? Sometimes we're not able to get there and possibly meet up with you on your schedule.
Yeah, I would be happy to, council.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Anyone else? All right. If no one from else from the audience says anything, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on Mr. Vice President Barr's substitute resolution, which is to defer this decision until the next meeting, which is May, sorry, I'm-
August 26, or April 26, I believe.
April 26. All right, thank you. April 26.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
No.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the substitute resolution is approved six to one, so we will be taking this up at the, on the regular agenda of the next meeting on April 26. All right, thank you. So, now we move on from the consent agenda to item number 17. Sorry, I didn't have my pages marked, as I usually do. All right, so this is moving on to the unfinished portion, unfinished business portion of our meeting, and this is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances. It's amended. This comes to us from the Planning Department to amend the Historic Preservation Commission Ordinance, Chapter 2.56, Section 020, Definitions, and Section 050, Historic Preservation Commission Creation and Membership, and Section 060, Commission, Commission Powers and Duties.
Madam President?
Vice President Barr?
I'll move approval.
And this is to refer this item to the Department of Law for preparation of the appropriate ordinance amendments. That was support, Councilmember White?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none. Would the clerk please take the vote on this?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the resolution is approved, and this will be referred to the Department of Law for preparation of the appropriate ordinances. We now move on to items, to item 18, and this is a roll call vote. This is a proposed amendments to the Livonia Code of Ordinances. It's amended, this from the Department of Law, for Section 010, 011, and 020 of Title V of Chapter 42, Hotels, Motor Courts, Lodging Houses, Rooming Houses, One Family Dwelling- Houses, Rooming Houses, One Family Dwelling, Two Family Rental Dwelling, and Multiple Family Rental Dwelling, to add subsections, definitions of short and long-term rentals, this was Council Resolution 60 dash CR dash 67 dash 20. The first reason reading was given by Councilmember Donavick at the March 22 meeting. We have new data, as I referred to, and the new data is a communication from the mayor dated April 9, 2021, sending forth notice of intent to veto the proposed amendments to subsections 16 through 34 of Section 2.10 of Article 2, and Section 4.02 of Article 4 of Ordinance 543 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance, and Sections 010, 011, and 020 of Title V, Chapter 42 of the Livonia Code of Ordinances pursuant to Council Resolution Number 67 dash 20, adopted February 24, 2020. With respect to this item, be received and placed on file for the information of the council. Council, Vice President Barr.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to offer a motion for this to go to committee of the whole, please.
Or?
Madam President?
Yes.
So, I want to explain, I actually have no desire to discuss this further, but I wanted to, since this was up for second reading, I do think there's merit in going to committee, which I'll explain here in a minute, but I'm not sure we'll have to discuss it there because, but I also think this doesn't have to go to second reading, and, you know, following our last meeting where we had a lot more discussion about this, I, you know, this is one of those things where, where my, just personally, my desired outcome and what I think is right legally are not necessarily the same thing, and that's always a tough, a tough thing. And so even after the last meeting where it may have sounded, you know, pretty settled, at least from me, I mean, I just continued to spend time studying this and frankly agonizing over this and what the right thing was. And, you know, to quote Inigo Montoya from one of my favorite all-time movies, Princess Bride, let me explain, no, there's too much, let me sum up. It comes down to this. My number one objective with this entire thing, with all the complexities that we've discussed over the last couple of years, my number one objective with this was to treat short-term rentals the same way we treat long-term rentals, with the same licensing and inspection requirements that we do on those. That's my number one thing. Now, there's other nuances to that, but it really all boiled down to that for me. And, and then as I explained in the last meeting, there's two other principles that I'm looking at here, I want something that's enforceable, and I want something where we're not overreaching, where we're just doing what we need to do in order to accomplish that objective. And through quite a bit of study, and then some pretty extensive conversation with our city attorney, what I realized was that actually, currently, with the way our ordinances are currently written, short-term rentals would actually fall under the same definition as our rentals today. We don't make a distinction between short or long term. And, and, and so it turns out that doing nothing with this actually accomplishes this objective that I'm looking to, looking to do. What we just need to do is make sure that we're enforcing our current ordinances, which we haven't necessarily done. And, and that would mean with, with doing nothing with this, it means that our short-term, what we're calling now short-term rentals, just like long-term rentals, would need to be licensed and would need to be inspected, which we already have a very low number of these as it is. There were less than 12 when we started this. I looked this past week, it appears there's only two now. One of those is the one on Antego Street that we've been talking about, and that one, I'm confident would, would be in violation of what we have there now, and so that needs to be enforced. So I'm actually at a point, after studying this further, that I think we can proceed with doing nothing on this, so I'm putting, I'm offering to put it in committee, or I'd like to put it in a committee, but I actually don't have any burning desire for us to go back and talk about it further. If we want to, we can, if something comes up that changes things, it can be there, but if it goes a period of time and no further discussion is needed, it can be a no further action, we can be done with this. But I think this serves the needs of our city, you know, and I also think this actually serves the needs of what we're looking for with the two particular properties that have been brought to our attention in the last couple of years. So that's my explanation.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. If I may, I'd like to direct a question to Mr. Bernier. Mr. Bernier, with the current ordinance, can you give us an update of, of how or if you are currently enforcing that through the court system as it currently pertains and is effective on such rentals? Thank you.
Yeah, I will, as council is aware, this came to the law department through city council. We had just prior to COVID, or just before the COVID period of time, we had the individuals, the residents from the Flamingo address who were complaining about one of the Airbnbs and the problems that they had associated with it. Council asked the law department to draft an ordinance or to give a, some recommendations, which of course we did. I believe, I believe then, as I said to Mr. Barr, to other council members, that we do have ordinances in effect that could preclude some of the activities that we see in the rentals. It was our position, given the request of council, however, that we could update this given the new format. The internet was never conceived of when we had a, had our licensing issues when it came to rentals, whether short-term, long-term rentals, or bed and breakfasts. So it's a new world that we live in with the internet being able to take care of this. We presented that to council in the hope to strengthen it. I told Mr. Barr, I told many members of the council, you know, we have tools right now to enforce this. It is illegal to have any rental in the city of Livonia that is unlicensed, whether it's a one-day rental or a 365-day rental. We were holding off a little bit because of what had been going on, on whether or not the ordinances were going to be changed by council. We didn't really want to proceed necessarily if they were going to change real quick on this. So we kind of held back on, on some of that, but since that time, since I've had the conversations with different members of council and what's going on here, I mean, we, we have taken a position that we are going to enforce the current ordinances that we have. So as far as the Antego address is concerned, they should have received the phone call that they have some issues that they're going to have to deal with in the district court coming up soon. And anyone else who has the Airbnb or Verbo or any other problems that are created, if they are not licensed, if they don't follow our licensing and rental procedure, we're going to proceed as if they are violating our licensing and rental agreement, and we will prosecute them on those charges. So as Mr. Barr correctly points out, we do have the tools now. The thought was, could we improve on the tools that we had? But we do have the tools, and we are going to proceed on those, and we are going to deal with the issue on Antego, and we will deal with other issues as they come up. I don't know if that answers your question or not, if it was too long.
Mr. Bernier, can I ask you one follow-up? I think that was a great answer, and I'm glad to hear that we're doing that as a city. From a good governance perspective, if other like incidents come up in the city, where is it best for residents to report those? Directly to your office, or through the Livonia Police Department or inspection? What would be the preferred modality of reporting if, if there should be a problem with another?
If we have problems, probably the best place, well, there are problems, and there are problems. One of the problems that we had is obviously some of it comes through the inspections department, the license, and the clerk's office, the licensing and the inspection of the rental properties. And then part of it is we learn about these through problems that come through the police department. So oftentimes, they, the two departments have, we're trying to figure out a method right now so the two of them can come together. As I indicated before, that's why I find the licensing issue to be so paramountly important, because while other issues are more difficult to ascertain, it's easy to tell you if a person has a license or doesn't have a license. And if they're advertising on VRBO or Airbnb and they don't have a license, that's easy to deal with, and we are planning on dealing with it. So if it's a question of unlicensed or problems with it, it's probably best to go through the inspection department. If it's a criminal activity other than that, for instance, obviously someone is out there like on Antego and having wild parties and creating a disturbance or whatever, by all means, call the police department. But we're going to, we're going to put something together so the two departments actually communicate better, and so we know that the problem exists.
All right, Councilmember Jolly, does that answer your question? Councilmember Jolly? Does that answer your question?
It does. My internet's coming in and out, so I apologize.
No problem.
I would just like to thank Mr. Bernier and his office, and particularly Mr. Neville, for taking, number one, so much time in dealing with this, but giving us a good result in the end. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Jolly, and thank you very much, Mr. Bernier. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to thank Mr. Bernier and his staff for all the hard work they've done on this for the last, gosh, two, three years now, Paul, at least, and I, I thought it was appropriate that this goes back into committee, just so the two new fellows, if you will, and others that may be coming to council in the future could get a clear understanding of this, because it can be very confusing, not only to us, but to the resident as well. I'm glad that Mr. Jolly asked a question of where the neighbors can go, because inevitably our phones are ringing, and, you know, it makes it difficult when we don't have the answers. We have a wonderful police and inspector department that will answer those calls, but it would be also maybe helpful, if it's not an emergency situation, that there be some type of form on the internet that somebody could fill out, or some suspicion thereof, so that we could track the behaviors of some. I mean, I know people get carried away. I'd also like to see us look at lot sizes we're doing on these things, and the square footage of these homes that are being, you know, used, quite frankly, as hotels in many ways. And it's not that I'm against them, it's just we got to get our arms around some parameters on this, so that our residents don't have to face some of these kinds of things that are going on, that they're witnessing firsthand, that's sending fear into them in some cases and their safety. So I know, Paul and others, we've worked hard on this, but I think we've got a little bit more to do, and that's why, you know, I think it was wise. Go ahead, Paul, I'm sorry.
If I may, there's one thing I want to point out is, is there room for improvement on our ordinances? Always, we've, City of North Carolina's always taken the position, we always have room for improvement, that we're going to improve it. Mr. Barr, though, is 100% right in what him and I were talking about earlier today several times, is that in fact, if you look at our ordinances, any rental, whether it's a one-day rental or a one-year rental, requires licensing and inspection, and we have been treating it in some respects a little bit differently, in the format, than the traditional rentals, which are traditionally six months or a year. But until we get this resolved, and we're going to treat all rentals as a rental, and so if somebody wants to do a VRBO or a HomeAway or any of those other formats, whether it's for 13 days, 15 days, 30 days, or whatever, it has to be licensed and inspected and follow all the rules of our rental registry. And if it doesn't, we, we will be dealing with it.
If I may, Madam Chair, thank you, Paul, for that. I'm glad you're, you know, putting down the hammer on some of this a bit, because it's, it's a little bit long overdue, and we gave you some of the nice people, both nice and not so nice, that came up to the council office when a lot of us were on the council then, that appeared and weren't, you know what I mean, licensed, if you will. So you might have a little list of that going on right now, and not that they're all bad people, I'm not saying that, it's just, like you said, let's do it legitimately, and let's get some other rules in place that we can all live by, and everybody can be living in harmony, so to speak. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Councilmember White, and then Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's a good idea to step back, take a pause here, especially knowing that the problem that the residents have been bringing to us with some of these short-term rentals that are unlicensed and pretty much unregulated. If we have the tools now to deal with that, I think there's no pressing emergency to move forward on the short-term rental changes that I think we could study further, and I like the idea of putting it in committee, so I will be in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President, and to the chair, to Mr. Bernier. This is always in my intention to treat short-term rentals or any rental as a rental property. So I just want to say good work there, and I hope that moving forward, something is done to the, the bad actors like Flamingo and Antego, because the residents, they deserve, they deserve to have their, their issues heard, and I hope that moving forward, this will accomplish that. Thank you, Mr. Bernier.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Donavick, and we are, of course, looking at all the issues. One of the issues that seems to be...
Paul, we're having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. One of the problems that, that we see on this end, and I was telling this to various members that I talked to today, is when we look at a situation like Antego, is the absentee owner. The problems are not necessarily the same for the owner who is, who is staying there at the house. We don't have the same kind of issues as we do when the person is renting the house out as a, as a party house to multiple people. So it is something to be considered, but until, until it's time that we actually have different rules in effect, we are going to be enforcing the rules we have.
Thank you. Anyone else, would anyone else from the audience like to address this issue? All right. Ms. DeAndrea Foizy. There we go, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yes, I'm unmuted. My name is DeAndrea Foizy. I live at 18914 Flamingo, Livonia, Michigan. I want to start by saying thank you, Mr. Bernier, and thank you to Jim Jolly, because I know that on March 22, I was very disappointed when I got off of the Zoom meeting, so I want to thank you guys for your persistence, and I also want to thank the mayor, because I did write to her also. But I do have just a quick question, Mr. Bernier. Right now, with the way the ordinance reads, would lot size come into licensing at all?
I don't, for a rental, I don't believe it does, but I don't honestly know the answer to that. I can't say I know all the ordinances off the top of my head. I don't think the lot size does, but it would still have to be, it would have to be licensed in any event. I don't believe it does, though.
Okay, so, but it would have to be licensed, so would it be a little harder to license someone on a smaller lot? Or you don't know?
Get licensed, you'd have to go through an inspection process and all. It's, it's not, we make sure all the safety and concerns are there, and all the other things are up to code. So it's not that it's harder now, but it would require that the property be maintained then, I assure you that.
Okay, and then also, just real quick, I did see the house on Antego, and I do know it is a very small house with a lot of rooms, so am I correct in saying that has not, she does not have a license to, to run that place?
No.
Okay, because I know we get, you know, I know neighbors who've gotten ordinance violations, you know, because, you know, maybe their, their motion detector or light is too bright, you know, and the ordinance officers are right out there to enforce that stuff. I'm wondering why they haven't been out to enforce this house yet.
Well, they, I assure you that they are, enforcement action has been taken on Antego.
Okay, all right. Thank you again for your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Foizy. Elaine Yates. Good evening, Ms. Yates. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Good evening. I wanted to say thank you to Jim Jolly and Mr. Bernier as well. I do have a question. I wanted to know if the bad actors who have already been shut down and proven that they don't have the ability to run these homes safely, like my neighbor, will they be banned from opening back up again, or could he just go apply and be up and running?
I, I don't want to play the city attorney here, but I'm going to take a stab at answering this, so Mr. Bernier, jump in. When you say apply, they were, the way our current rules are written, they, they are not able to apply legally on any of the short-term home rental websites. So, you know, if any, when you say apply, Ms. Yates, I assume you're talking about applying to the sites, like, you know, Airbnb or Verbo or any of the others, correct?
Can he apply for licensure and then reopen that short-term rental?
He would, he would, if someone's going to do this, they have to, they have to, they have to, and you raise a good question, but they would have to go through the entire process. a good question, but they would have to go through the entire process, just as someone is going to rent a house for a year would have to go through. And I don't know the specific answer to this, Mr. Burnier, but when we, when someone comes forward to seek licensing for a rental, because these are not, these are treated the same as long-term rentals, do we look at prior ordinance violations in that process? I don't know if we do or not.
I'm not sure if we do or not, to be honest with you, because the inspection department handles the licensing of it. But if they are, if they otherwise qualify for a license, and they follow the rules and regulations of getting licensed for it, they'll be granted a license if they follow the rules and regulations that are set forth. If they choose not to and they just open a business, that's when the enforcement activity comes in. Because under our current ordinance dealing with rentals, all rentals have to be inspected, they have to be licensed, they have to have a registry of the guests. There are a lot of different steps that they have to go through, all of which are some of the problems that we've had with the Airbnbs format, the Verbo's, the HomeAway's. So I guess a homeowner has to ask themselves, is it worth it going through that to rent it out for here and there versus a six-months or a one-year rental?
So even though they've had issues in the past, like my neighbor's guest has had issues here, and he has not been able to control his guest, even with that knowledge with the city, you guys would still, if he met all the licensing requirements, allow him to have another short-term rental?
I guess, ma'am, what I was saying was, I didn't answer that question because I don't really know the answer to that question. I'm not sure how much the prior background has to do with the licensing, and I'm not prepared to answer the question, so I'm not going to. But if it's a factor, it will be considered. If it's not a legal factor, it won't be considered.
Is it something that you guys can discuss in your committee?
Yeah. And, Ms. Yates, we can certainly get the answer for that. We can get the answer to that and get that answer to you before, you know, as quickly as we can get it, before the next meeting.
Okay. And just one other thing I wanted to bring is, I have gone out and met some of the neighbors on some of these other streets, and there's more than just two streets in Livonia. There's three or four that are having issues. And in speaking with some of the neighbors, I just want to let you guys know, when we first brought this issue to you, we discussed kids going back and forth to bus stops, et cetera. One of the neighbors had told me that a child had been followed by one of the Airbnb guests to their home, and that's quite scary to me. So I think councils should keep that in the back of their mind when they're making the determination whether to allow or not allow or tighten restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yates. And I would like to address that last comment that you just made. Absolutely. And, you know, I would hope that if a child was followed by anybody, that the police were called. And we've had these, you know, what we've discovered through all this work is, we've had the ability that, in fact, these fall under, every single rental, like these short-term, whether it's a room or a house, falls under our existing regulations that don't allow for it. And I guess I'm, I don't fully understand, and I understand why the mayor intended to veto it, but I don't understand why, if we've had these regulations in place, I mean, these are the regulations, that there wasn't an interest in pursuing cease and desist and attacking all of this behavior a year ago, when it first came to us. But, you know, I am happy with where we've ended up, and I would, and I think somebody said it earlier, Ms. Yates, if there's anything that, you know, that you believe borders or is criminal activity, that should be reported to the police. And certainly, it may lead a trail back to illegal rentals, which need to be shut down immediately. So, thank you. All right. Appreciate your comments and appreciate all the work of this for the betterment of your neighborhood. All right. Next, I'll go to the Galaxy tab, E32GB, and we'll ask you to give your name and address for the record, please. You should be able to, there we go. Good evening.
Hello. Hi, my name's Marilyn Smith. I live at 18978 Flamingo. And you guys can hear me, right?
Yes.
Yes.
In regards to what you just said about there's actions that, and the police need to be called, when you have pictures of the Airbnb guests physically peering through a six-foot privacy fence and taking pictures, and yes, that was reported to the police, the police, oh, there's nothing we can do about it, when the Airbnb guests are following their residents and then assaulting them, and the police are called, and no, there's nothing that they can do about it. My concern about so many things about these Airbnbs, I don't care if it's one day, two days, six months, a year, long-term rentals have not been a problem here. It's the short-term rentals that I'm concerned with. Smaller properties, streets that only have parking on one side, you're infringing on the rest of the residents to rent your business. That's a business. And any other business in any part of this city where there is parking issues, there's a sign that says, "For parking of this business only. Others will be ticketed and towed." Okay, well, you talk about licensing, and you talk about all the regulations. Well, what is in it? What does that consist of? Does it take into consideration the parking factor, or the size of the lots, or that you can literally look inside the neighbor's window, but because we live in a neighborhood, not a business area?
Madam Chair, it's been the two minutes. All right. Thank you. And I couldn't get your last name. I couldn't hear it when you said it.
Smith.
Thank you for your comments. And to your point about licensing, whether it's one night, or two nights, or a week, they have to go through the entire licensing process like it was going to be a long-term rental. And the reason, I believe, and Mr. Barr and I had a chance to talk about this earlier today, that he offered to put it into committee, is it gives us the ability that if we do see some of these homes that have been acting as hotels in violation of our existing ordinances, if we do see that they decide they want to go through the regulation process, and in order to do short-term rentals by having it in committee, it gives us the ability to very quickly address issues that might arise that are going to be the short-term rentals. And then to look at the ordinance and understand if we need some additional, if we need some additional, or we want to contemplate or ask for some additional restrictions or requirements in the ordinance related to short-term. But as of right now, if they are not licensed for a long-term, they are conducting illegal business by having anybody there on a rental basis. So I hope that answers your question or some of your concerns. And I think all of us would be happy to continue a discussion with you if you'd like to get in touch with us. Next, we'll go to Julie. I'm sorry, before we go to Julie, Councilmember Toy. I'm sorry, I just saw your hand up.
I'm sure that's okay. I just, I wanted to remind the council, those of you that were on at the time, that one woman over on Flamingo, you know, had one of the Airbnb people all over, and if I'm mistaken, almost ran her off the road and really gave her some obscene comments and different things. So, you know, it goes beyond just the property sometimes, and I think that's what the resident was trying to point out. And also, from what I understand from others, they're using the living rooms now as bedrooms, too. So, Paul, when chief and others and inspectors and all that is going out there, they may want to check that out as well. Appreciate it so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. All right, Julie. Now, it should be able, there we go. Evening, Julie.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you. I live on Entego. I live two houses down from the rental. My view on long-term rental is that you commit to the rental, and you can, you commit to the person you're renting from. I changed my address to Livonia when I was renting on St. Francis. The short terms, they're here, and then they're gone. But I thank you for doing this. My question to the city attorney is, if you already have served her and stuff, they're still renting. There's a brand-new car out there right now that hasn't been there. So she's still renting it, even though she's been in noncompliance since September. And she talks to her residents, and they get angry with us because, you know, she's pretty much assured them that we're the ones trying to give them a problem. So I hope you view that as something when you try to figure out, she's not in compliance, and she's still renting. But I thank you guys for keep visiting this. This is our home. This is where we come home to. This is where we leave for work. These are our homes. And it's very disruptive when you have this going on on your street, and you have elderly neighbors who are scared to be in their homes. I just wanted to say thank you for keep visiting this because it means a lot to us to try to figure out why this is happening on our block. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Julie. And we are, you know, we're very concerned about life and the quality in all of our neighborhoods. And we're always looking for ways, as is the administration, to address that and use all the tools at our disposal. Because every single Livonian, regardless of, you know, where they live or their circumstances, deserves to feel safe and happy in their home. So thank you. And we'll just keep working at it. And that's, again, why the vice president has referred it to committee. So we have the ability to go back very quickly if there are additional unforeseen issues. So thank you.
If I may, the conversations I had with the vice president, he was...
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't tell who was talking.
I'm sorry.
Very sorry.
Conversations I had with the vice president were much along the lines of what we're doing now, encouraging us to prosecute under the ordinances that we do have, in fact, until we get a chance to, and if council does amend the ordinances to something that reflects what we have going on now. I think all councils, all members of the council and the mayor want us to enforce the ordinances as written, because, quite frankly, nobody should have to deal with the problem they have in Entego. As far as the resident, the owner of that house, she may or may not know what's happening yet, but she will.
Thank you, Mr. Burnier. And I'm sure the neighbors on Entego are happy to hear that. So thank you. And we do appreciate all of your work and all of the administration work on this. All right. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So I think, I'm very comfortable with where we are in regards to this. Is it at all possible that we explore ways to tighten, not to get us into this, but if we could possibly consider, at a later date, I don't want to put this in committee now, but things that would preclude somebody from renting a house if there were significant criminal or other violations, so that we could, I just, like I said, I don't want to put this in committee, but I want to kind of refer to the administration just for consideration going forward, that we could strengthen those rental situation licensing perspectives.
I think that's a great suggestion, Councilmember Jolly. We do have some of our different licensing. We'll tell you, we have, we do background checks on them, and I can't tell you about this one in particular, even though the resident asked about it, but some of our other licensing require that you not have a criminal conviction or not have a background. So sometimes, so there are things that we do look at, and we will look into the possibility of that for the rental programs.
Thank you.
And I think, Mr. Jolly, not I think, I made a commitment that we give back to the resident who asked about it in short order as to what's there now. But thank you very much. Parliamentarian White, do you know, did Ms. Foizie have any time left, under two minutes?
She did. She had about a minute.
Okay. Ms. Foizie, you've got another minute. As you, I don't know if you were at the beginning when the parliamentarian, as she does in every meeting, reviews the rules for audience communication, but individuals are limited to two minutes on any given agenda item, but you still have a minute left. So you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you. The other, the one comment I just want to make real fast is, when you are thinking about other things for licensing, maybe to consider the fact that on Flamingo, we are down the street from an elementary school. I think that's important to consider when you have people coming and going, and you're not really sure who they are. And that's all I want to say. So thank you, and you can consider that at a later date, too.
Thank you. And as you know, we do have a number of our ordinances and zoning ordinances that do look at proximity to things like elementary schools. So thank you very much for your comment. All right. Let's see, there's a hand up. Oh, that was Ms. Foizie. All right. So we need to take the vote to put this in the committee, correct? Okay, I've lost track of where we were.
Madam President, can I ask you a question? I know 18, 19, and 20 are really all the same issue. I was, for the sake of brevity, I was wondering if we were going to do all three of them at one time.
Well, if there is a way that we can do that correctly, I'm happy to do that.
Madam President.
Maker of the motion.
Yeah, I would suggest we do that. I forget what the circumstances were, but I think when we handled this last time, I had the gavel, and I know that's what we did. And as the maker of this motion, I would suggest that we do that again.
And the supporter, what is that? Who is the supporter? Toy? All right. Are you comfortable with that, that we would put all three of these into committee?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We have someone else from the audience who wishes to address us on this issue. Good evening. Last four digits are 6518. You should be able to unmute yourself and then star six to talk to us. And if you would, there we go. And if you would please give us your name and address, we would appreciate it.
Hello. Yes, my name is Carissa. I'm at 7701 Randy Drive in Westland, Michigan, 48185. I'm not quite sure if I have reached you guys at the correct time, but I'm calling in regarding the Beagles. I know that that was...
No, you have not. That's on our study, that's on our study agenda, Carissa. So if you can sit tight, we will be getting to the study agenda. 10 minutes, we'll start our study meeting 10 minutes after we conclude this meeting.
Thank you. Okay, sorry about that.
All right. So thank you. And just sit tight. Thank you very much. All right. So we now have a motion from Vice President Barr to put items 18, 19, and 20 into committee of the whole. And, Mr. Burnier, is it permissible for me to indicate that the new data that we've received for those is also a non-veto letter, or a veto, intention to veto letter from the mayor?
That's correct. The letter applied to 18, 19, and 20, as do the motion that Mr. Barr made, pertains to 18, 19, and 20.
Yes. And as I, and again, I referenced the new data at the beginning of the meeting for items 18, 19, and 20, and that is the new data for those items. All right. So, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on putting this, putting these three items into committee of the whole? 18, 19, and 20.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough? Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And items 18, 19, and 20 are moved into committee. Now, I need to ask another parliamentary question. We've had a lot of intricacies the last few weeks. Does the putting into committee then preclude any second reading? Or are they still offered for second read?
I think it's been given the first reading. It could come out of committee as a second read on that same ordinance, but most likely, it would change and would have to go through the process again.
So tonight, so, but what I may ask you is, tonight, I don't need to call for a second read. Is that correct?
You do not.
Okay.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
If I'm not mistaken, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm going off what we discussed today, but just for the council's education, I didn't realize this. I believe once we get to a new council, so that would be January, that the first read is dead as well, that the first read is only good for this council. So, like I said, my intent for this committee, I don't see an immediate need to take this up and... to take this up in committee. I think what we've done tonight is satisfactory, but if we do nothing and we get to January 1st, the first read would then be null and void regardless. So I found that interesting. I thought I'd share that with everybody, Paul, if I got that right.
That's absolutely correct. Thank you.
All right, and for anyone who's still on the phone listening into the, onto this item, because we put these into committee, there will be no further action, so a second read and a vote will not be taken. So these ordinances just go sit in committee until they're taken up sometime later this year, if they are. All right, thank you, everyone. And with that, we move on to, well, we've removed item 21, which was a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance number 543 from tonight's agenda. So now we go on to item number 22, which is an award of bid to the Department's of Park and Recreation for Sheldon Pool Deck paving from budgeted funds, council. Jolly, Mr. Jolly, is that...
Yes, Madam President. Can I offer an approving resolution?
Certainly. Councilmember Toy, support. Is there discussion or questions?
I think Parks and Rec might be on.
They are on, and...
I don't have any questions.
You got the votes voted.
You know, in the last meeting, I had asked about, I had asked, I didn't want this on consent because I wanted to understand how it tied into a larger vision for Sheldon Pool, and I've had some opportunities to have discussion on that. So any other questions? Does anyone from the audience have any questions on this? If not, we can go ahead, Madam Clerk, and please take the vote on this.
Councilmember, Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And we have, the council vote 7-0 to accept the bid from Luigi Ferdinandi and Sun Cement for the Sheldon Pool Decking. This, we move on to item number 23. This is a waiver petition comes from the Planning Commission, petition 2021-02-02-02, submitted by SPP Investors 2 LLC, requesting, requesting approval to redevelop a site, including demolishing the existing restaurant, Romano's Macaroni Grill, constructing a full-service restaurant with drive-through facilities, Shake Shack, and constructing a bank with drive-through facilities on property located in northeast corner of Seven Mile and Hagerty Roads, 393007 Mile Road, in the southeast quarter of Section 6, council. Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll offer an approving resolution for purpose of discussion.
Support from, is that Jolly?
Yes. Whoever.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Donavick, I believe.
Donavick, I'm sorry. You guys are like ventriloquists. I hear things, but I don't see anybody's lips moving. Okay. Comments? Discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
So first of all, first of all, just a point of interest, when I was in Florida with my family a couple of weeks ago, my daughter and I went to a Shake Shack, it's the first time I've been to one, so I now know what we're talking about. But in looking at this plan, I actually, I, I'm excited about this project for Livonia, as I said last time. I'm okay with approving this, but there's one thing I'd like council to consider. When, I know the main thing that we were concerned about before was traffic patterns. And as I look at that more, the, the one that concerns me the most is the one, is turning left onto southbound Hagerty. Turning east on, turning left onto eastbound Seven Mile actually doesn't concern me much at all. And that's based on experience with the old Macaroni Grill and just looking at it. It's far enough from the intersection that, except at the very, very busiest time, I don't necessarily see that being an issue. But what's interesting is that what we learned in the study meeting was that Wayne County has indicated that that's the one that they want to restrict, which seems a little bit backwards to me. Now, let's be clear, that's, Wayne County's going to make that decision, it's not us. But, but anything we, they can make, they can take our resolution, they can make it more restrictive, but they're not going to take any restrictions we put on them and make it less restrictive. And so with these current plans right now, because Wayne County indicated that they didn't want that left turn onto Seven Mile, which is what heads back into Livonia, that's what the plans indicate, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can approve this, but just noting that, that council's not requiring the no-left turn onto Seven Mile. Now, if Wayne County comes in and adds that, fine, but I don't think, my, my thought is we would not be the ones that need to put that on there. I don't think there's a problem with turning left onto Seven Mile at this property. So if, I'd love to hear thoughts if anybody disagrees with me, but if the maker of the motion was okay with that, I'd love to add that stipulation that we approve this as is, minus the requirement that there'd be a no-left turn onto Seven Mile Road.
The maker was, I can't remember who the maker was, I usually write it down. McCullough.
Madam President, if I may?
Please.
So, Vice President, taking that into consideration, and I looked through the the traffic study on this one, and even making a left at the light where the old, you know, where the AMC 20 pops out is even troubling. I don't see, you know, for one, I think Wayne County, I don't think there's a shot that they will require it. I think so, that resolution, I think, is mummified, but even being, with the study itself, I don't see anybody making a left-hand turn out of there, especially with all the new traffic in that whole area. I mean, now that you go all the way down to Costco and the Chick-fil-A, I would, I would be fine to support exactly what's listed by the traffic engineers. Not to discredit that, I just, I can't see it, and I, obviously, they do this work, you know, for a living, and they come up with the studies, you know, during peak and low-peak times. So I would be in favor of supporting it as it is. And then keep it in mind, I know deep down in the, in that packet, we did put the restrictions that they will supply their, their traffic plan for the opening and the honeymoon period, and I think that will help a lot. I know that, you know, even with Chick-fil-A and Northville, they stack into the, into that old baby's drawls parking lot, and it seems to be working great. So I like with the restrictions of everything that's at play. So that's where I'll keep my support. Thank you.
Councilmember Donavick?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure who would answer this question, but to Councilman McCullough's point, when the developer provides the traffic study at a later time, can we, if we find that there needs to be some sort of traffic restriction, can the city implement that traffic restriction? Or that's within the county, or we don't have that option later, only have that option now?
Are you going through the chair to Councilmember Donavick, or I mean, Councilmember McCullough?
Actually, to Mr. Tormina through the chair.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought you were, Mark, do you know the answer? I'm sure you do know the answer.
Well, Wayne County will make the ultimate decision. They'll review the study and issue the permits with or without the modifications to those drive approaches. And whatever those decisions are, that's what the city would have to live with, quite frankly. You know, that's, that would, that would, we cannot override that because both roads are under their jurisdiction. Does that answer your question? I...
Rob?
Yes, it does, Madam President. Thank you.
All right, I'll go to Vice President Barr and then back to Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I have a comment, but through the chair to Mr. McCullough. Brandon, you, you understood I was talking about the Seven Mile exit, not the Hagerty exit, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I still think it's just so tough. I do, I just...
No, that's, that's, that's fair. I just want to make sure, when you mentioned Chick-fil-A and Costco, I thought, maybe you thought I was talking about Hagerty, that's why I was confused. But, so just, I want to make clear that by doing what I'm suggesting, we're not over, like Mark just said, we're not overruling Wayne County. They, they can, and perhaps like they will, come in and put that restriction anyway. I just, I, as I've talked about recently with another project, anytime you put these types of restrictions in place, you just create new problems. Okay? You imagine someone trying to turn, want to turn left out of there to come back into Livonia, they're going to have to turn right, they're going to have to fight through that intersection, they're going to have to find a place to turn around, they're going to have to come back. And I understand there's situations where that's absolutely necessary. I can think of examples in the city right now where we have them, where I'm glad that we do. And, and in my opinion, I think that's going to be necessary on Hagerty, which, for whatever reason, Wayne County has not said it needs it there, which I, just blows my mind. But it seems to me they have it backwards. The Hagerty one, which is right next to the intersection, you know, I think you need one. The one on Seven Mile is much further from the intersection than many other comparables where we don't have such restrictions. And when you consider the fact that this is Livonia business, but we're literally routing everybody away from Livonia, there's no way to get back, I just say, why, why add the restriction on it from our perspective? If Wayne County had to find that's on them, I just don't think we should be doing it.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Tormina. Just, just to clarify, Wayne County does have the final say. So we're approving, obviously, this, 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 the site plan approval, and then it will go through Wayne County. So, I mean, to Vice President Barr's point, for matters of, you know, moving to a vote, I'm, I am fine, because if Wayne County's going to be the be-all, set-all, I think then it would be to see if they restrict it or not, and of which I do think they will. But if they don't, you know, and obviously, they deem it appropriate, I would defer to their expertise. Is that fair?
Yeah, I would just add this, that I think to Mr. Barr's point, in the unlikely event that Wayne County decides that restricting left turns onto Seven Mile is not necessary, the site plan still shows the right-in, right-out restriction, and the site plan would have to be followed. Or the developer would have to come back before the Planning Commission and City Council to modify the plan to eliminate that, those restrictions. I think that's, that's essentially his point, that in the unlikely event that they don't require it, then we should have the flexibility to, to eliminate that requirement as well.
So if I may, I would, I'm fine to modify my original motion to include removing that restriction, and whatever word, verbiage that makes sense to everyone writing the notes.
All right, Councilmember Donavick, you were the second. Are you, do you agree to that?
I'm comfortable with that, Madam President. Thank you.
All right, Vice President Barr?
Yeah, one final point, and thank you, Councilmember McCullough, for hearing me out and being amenable to that. Mark, thanks for your explanation. I just want to point out that the reason the site plan says that, at least according to what the petitioner told us, the reason the site plan says that is because Wayne County indicated that's what they wanted. It's not necessarily what the petitioner wants. So I do think it's unlikely this gets changed. I hope it does, but it, it at least now makes it a non-zero chance that it gets changed. So I appreciate everybody's patience and willingness to talk through this.
All right.
Before you do the vote, if I could just make sure I understand what the motion is. The motion is moved by Mr. McCullough, supported by Rob Donavick, and it's as is with the, with the exception that the restriction of the no-left turn onto Seven Mile is no longer a requirement if Wayne County does not require it. Is that, is that what it is, Mr. Barr and Mr., okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. If there's no one from the audience that would like to comment, then I would ask, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on item number 23, which is the, I've lost my page again, the approval of the site plan for the new Shake Shack, the change being that if Wayne County does not request a prohibition of a left-hand turn onto Seven Mile from the new Shake Shack, then we would not, we would not request it.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the site plan is approved, with the change noted. All right, item number 24 is a request to schedule a closed committee of the whole meeting, this comes from the Department of Law, for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and attorney-client privilege communications with respect to Dwayne Love et al versus the City of Livonia. Councilmember White?
I'll offer approving.
Second.
Support from Councilmember Jolly. Is there any audience discussion on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take the vote on item number 24, scheduling the closed committee?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the, the motion carries unanimously. Item number 25 is a request to schedule a closed committee of the whole meeting, this comes from the Department of Law, for the purposes of discussing pending litigation and attorney-client privilege communications with respect to Susan O'Donoghue Williams et al versus the City of Livonia, council. Councilmember White?
I'll offer approving.
Second.
Support from Councilmember Jolly. Discussion, anyone from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take the vote?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the motion carries vote, with affirmative votes from all seven members of the council. This time, we go back to audience communication. If anyone from the audience who did not communication, who did not communicate with the council in the first audience communication would like to address council on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. All right, Ms. Caravalla.
Hello, my name's Amanda Caravalla, and I live in Old Rosedale Gardens. I'd like to express my support for city council to put on the agenda a citizen review board for complaints against...
I'm sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you, Ms. Caravalla.
Can you hear me better now?
A little bit.
Okay, I'll talk louder. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Hello, my name's Amanda Caravalla. I live in Old Rosedale Gardens, and I'd like to express my support for city council to put on the agenda a citizen review board for complaints against the Livonia Police Department, as has been requested by other Livonia citizens repeatedly over the past year. After reviewing the complaints over the past six years, it is clear that a citizen review board is the only way to remove the subjectivity that is currently taking place in Livonia Police Department's process of reviewing complaints. And in support of that, I'd like to read a complaint by a black male born in 1987. "I was pulled over by a Livonia cop. He walks up to my car. I then say twice, 'I have a concealed pistol license.' The officer overtalks me and starts to tell me why he pulled me over. I had my weapon next to me in the counsel of my cup holder. He then steps back and says, 'Freeze,' with his weapon drawn at me. I thought my life was going to be over. I had my hands up and then said, 'Officer, I have a concealed license, a concealed pistol license. I told you that twice.' Then he says, 'Reach for it.' I said, 'No, you reach it and you can get it.' He says, 'Go ahead and reach slow.' I then get it by leaning my whole body away from my weapon toward him so I didn't get shot. He then got all info, walked to the car, came back with it. I had my girl on the phone, listening to him. He says, 'I cut you a break, two points instead of three.'" Livonia Police Department responds to this complaint. That's what happened, but that the Livonia Police Officer apologized immediately for not hearing him. It brings flashbacks to Philando Castile, and I just wonder how, what the dollar amount that city council is going to settle on for these cases like they versus the City of Livonia, $260,000 that the taxpayers are on the hook for, before you seriously consider a citizen's review board? for, before you seriously consider a citizen's review board?
All right, Ms. Carvalho, thank you, Caravalla, I'm sorry I mispronounced it, thank you very much for your suggestion and your comments this evening, your, taking the time to communicate with us is appreciated. All right, next we go to Michael, and Michael, if you would please share your name and address with us, good evening, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hello, my name is Michael Hayes, I live at one-eight-seven-nine-eight Norwich, it was on my understanding there was going to be some discussion, am I unmuted, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
That, there was going to be some discussion regarding the leash, leash usage in Livonia, is that correct?
That's, that's at our next meeting.
At your next meeting, okay, so, no opportunity to speak on it tonight?
It'll be covered, it'll be covered at, at our next, at the study meeting, which we'll get to ten minutes after the conclusion of this meeting.
So, so stay tuned for the meeting after this?
Please, please.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we go to last four-digit, six-five-one-eight, and if we could please have your name and address. Good evening, and it's, good evening.
Hi there, this is Carissa Perrin again, and again, I was waiting to talk about the Beagles, but it sounds like that will be another ten more minutes following this moment, does that sound right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr?
We should probably be clear for her, it's going to be quite a bit more than ten minutes, the next meeting starts in ten minutes, and that's on the agenda for the next meeting, but it may be quite a bit longer than that, so.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Barr, the, the next, to clarify, the next meeting starts in ten minutes, but you'll, from the conclusion of this meeting, but then, that's agenda item, can somebody help me out? It's a, I know it's not one of the first agenda items, it's, it's a.
It's either sixteen or seventeen.
Yeah, it's, it's late in the meeting, so you'll just need to stay tuned and, and follow along with us, and we'll get to that item when we get to it, which, we'll try to get to it, move through the agenda quickly. All right, if no one else from the audience has any, who's not communicated with us, has anything to comment, then I would take a motion, entertain a motion. For. Port from Barr, I think we can safely show seven on that, we are adjourned at eight fifty-three, and we will commence, we'll try to commence as close to nine o'clock as possible, so, council, if we can get back on at nine, and just remember, a reminder, please go on mute and stop your video until the next meeting.